We're ready.
That's it? Okay, great. All right, good morning, everyone. I am pleased to call to order the September 9th, 2021 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. And I'm going to ask Mr. Bonner to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Bonner. All right. I've got a few remarks to make this morning. And then I'm going to start with some good news and some congratulations. I want to recognize the players, coaches, and parents of the Upper Providence Little League. Last month, Upper Providence represented Montgomery County and the state of Pennsylvania in this year's Little League World Series. Upper Providence is the first Pennsylvania team in six years to make it to the Little League World Series. On the road to the Little League World Series, Upper Providence won the District 27 and Section 8 tournaments before capturing their second Pennsylvania state championship in four years. They closed out that tournament by winning five games in five days. From there, Upper Providence won the Mid-Atlantic Regional Championship, outscoring their opponents by an impressive 31 to 8 margin across four games. They just need to be talking to the Eagles, I think, about how to do a little better with that. And that secured them a place in the Little League World Series. In the Little League World Series, Upper Providence came up on the losing end of a pair of really tough matchups, ending their incredible run sooner than we had all hoped. However, success in Little League can only be summed up in the box scores. We're so proud of the team for the hard work, dedication, and character they've displayed every step of the way, and we can't wait to see what this group accomplishes next, on the field and off. So kudos to everyone and to their coaches and their families, and we're just so happy for all of you. And next, I'm going to move on to our regular COVID-19 update. Due to the rapid spread of the Delta variant, Montgomery County continues to see our key COVID-19 indicators placing us in the high transmission range. However, I do want to be very clear that the vast majority of the new cases are occurring in unvaccinated individuals, and that the quickest way to get this pandemic under control is to get vaccinated. Over the past two weeks, the county has been in the CDC-defined high level of community transmission, which by definition means that we're seeing a seven-day average of more than 100 cases per 100,000 residents, or a positivity rate over 10%. In our case, we are meeting the criteria because we have been above 100 cases per 100,000 residents for two weeks now. Our positivity rate is now 5.63%, and as you recall, being over 5% puts us into that community spread range. In keeping with county policy from earlier mitigation measures enacted during the pandemic, the Montgomery County Office of Public Health changes mitigation recommendations only after there has been two weeks of a consistent change in cases. In the case of masking, that means a consistent increase or decrease in the level of community transmission. Last Friday marked two weeks that Montgomery County has been in the high level of COVID-19 community transmission. Tomorrow, we will be at three weeks. And this is why the Office of Public Health is now recommending masks indoors and outdoors in certain situations for both vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals. I want to emphasize again that vaccination is the most important public health action to end the COVID-19 pandemic, and we strongly urge all Montgomery County residents to get vaccinated if you're eligible. I'm extremely proud to report that more than 80% of Montgomery County residents aged 12 and older have received at least one dose of the vaccine, and the majority of those individuals, we believe, are fully vaccinated. While this is excellent progress, we still have a ways to go to fully protect our community, particularly given the large number of children who are not yet eligible to be vaccinated. We need as many of those who are 12 years of age and older as possible to get vaccinated to help keep our entire community as safe as possible. The county continues to offer the Moderna, Pfizer, and J&amp;J vaccines at our county-run clinics. Walk-ups are accepted at all sites for those aged 12 and over. And to see a list of vaccine clinic locations, you can visit montcopa.org/covid-19vaccine. We continue to offer a third dose of the Moderna and Pfizer vaccines to immunocompromised individuals only who meet the criteria set out by the FDA's EUA or Emergency Use Authorization for a booster dose in an immunocompromised individual. We're also offering homebound individuals the opportunity to register for a third dose through our Department of Public Safety. Information on how to schedule a home visit is available on our vaccine webpage at montcopa.org/covid-19vaccine. And finally, we want to remind everyone that no-cost COVID-19 testing remains available at our four sites across the county. And certainly, if you have any symptoms or concerns, you should get tested. This is no cost to the person being tested, and results are typically back within 24 hours. I want to thank everyone who has done their part by being vaccinated. This community has pulled together in an extraordinary way. Our county has one of the highest vaccination rates in Pennsylvania, and I hope that we can just keep that going. And for those that are not yet vaccinated, just know that this is a safe, effective vaccine, and it is the best thing that you can do to help get us on the other side of this pandemic. Now, I'm going to move on to some updates on our Hurricane Ida recovery efforts. First of all, I want to give my deepest and most heartfelt thanks to our first responders and emergency management personnel, 911 call takers and dispatchers, and the many essential staff for their work since last Wednesday. The remnants of Hurricane Ida have caused widespread damage across our county. The governor has now visited our county twice to tour the damage himself, and we are hopeful that we will soon have a disaster declaration from FEMA. This will be critical in order to provide direct financial assistance to individuals that were impacted. Yesterday, we opened a multi-agency resource center, known as MARC, for residents affected by Hurricane Ida to assist our residents with their concerns, such as temporary housing assistance, food assistance, and more. The MARC is open right now, today, until 5:00 p.m. We strongly urge anyone with any unmet needs as a result of the storm to visit the MARC. It's a one-stop shop for a number of resources. The MARC is located at 2 West Lafayette Street at the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit in Norristown. Free parking is available on site. The MARC is also within walking distance of Septus Norristown Transportation Center. It's about a block and a half away. And there are numerous bus routes that also go and make that same stop at the Norristown High Speed Line, so very accessible by public transportation. In addition, the county is offering free transportation to the MARC for anyone who needs it through GoGoGrandparent, which is a ride-hailing service. You do not have to be a grandparent to use it, but it's called GoGoGrandparent. To schedule a ride, you can visit www.gogograndparent.com/montco, M-O-N-T-C-O, or you can call That's 855-464-6872. All of these details can be found on our main Ida Recovery page, which is montcopa.org/ida. And also want everyone to know that at the MARC, there is Spanish language as well as American Sign Language translation available. Residents can also text MONTCOIDA to 888-777. So text the word MONTCOIDA, all one word, to 888-777 to get the latest updates sent to your phone via text message. I also want to remind any resident who's experienced damage due to the remnants of Ida to please report it. This will help make sure that we get all the funding that we are entitled to into this county as a result of this storm. Damage must be reported to both the county and your township. The forms and instructions to submit that information are also on that website at montcopa.org/ida. And finally, I'm very pleased to announce that we have partnered with the Montgomery County Foundation to stand up an emergency disaster fund to support people impacted by Hurricane Ida. All donations to this fund will support nonprofit agencies serving Montgomery County individuals and families impacted by Hurricane Ida. Funds can be utilized to support housing, food, gasoline, and household needs, such as cleaning products, hygiene products, bedding, towels, and clothing. Information about the fund and a link to donate will be up later today, so we encourage everyone to check that main Ida page. And one last time, that's montcopa.org/ida. And again, I just want to thank everyone who's been actively engaged in helping our communities recover. We have seen so many folks in our community step up to help their neighbors, and they're doing everything they can to make this recovery go as smoothly and quickly as possible. Our first responders and other emergency personnel have been working nonstop since last Wednesday, and just want to thank everyone for the incredible work that they've been doing across our county. And with that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Lawrence.
Thank you. First, I'd like to add my thanks and appreciation to our Department of Public Safety, Municipal Police and Fire Departments, and first responders for their heroic efforts last week. They saved many lives. And I'd also like to ask the entire Montgomery County community to remember that while some areas of the community just dealt with water in the basement or branches down, some of our municipalities were hit very hard, and people have been displaced, especially in Bridgeport, Norristown, Horsham, Upper Dublin, and areas along the Perkyomen Creek. And while it's been incredible to see our entire county community rally to help, just because waters have receded and some debris has been cleared doesn't mean that our neighbors won't still need our assistance in the weeks and months to come. So I would encourage everyone to visit the link or do whatever you can over these next few weeks to help our neighbors who have been displaced because of Hurricane Ida. One way you could do that, an additional way, is the Freedom from Hunger. On September 1st, Valley Forge Tourism and Convention Board kicked off its 7th Annual Valley Forge Freedom from Hunger Food Drive. They have partnered once again with the Montco Anti-Hunger Network, also known as MON, which is a coalition of hunger relief organizations that work together to keep families stable with food assistance. Pre-COVID, the MON served more than 29,000 households, more than 60,000 individuals per year. Over the past year, the numbers have increased to more than 38,000 households and 84,000 individuals. Continued aftereffects from the pandemic still threaten the stability of thousands of Montgomery County households, and now we also have the aftereffects of Hurricane Ida. Through the food drive, the goal is to collect 25,000 pounds of food throughout the month of September and reach a lifetime goal of 70,000 pounds. Due to the continued COVID pandemic, the board will only again be accepting donations online. Your help is needed now more than ever before. Please visit www valleysforge.org/hunger to make a donation. I also want to give an update on our rent and utility relief program. The most recent federal eviction moratorium ended on August 26th, leaving millions behind on rent and more than a third of them facing evictions. To prevent a surge in evictions in Montgomery County, the President Judge, Thomas Del Richie, has issued an administrative order to all managerial district courts. The order, which went into effect on September 3rd, directs the managerial district court judges to issue a 30-day continuance for households facing eviction proceedings and provide time for them and their landlords to receive rental and utility assistance. We are grateful to the courts for this quick work to intervene and protect vulnerable rental households in Montgomery County, allowing them to stay in their homes. If you or your family has been negatively impacted by COVID and need help paying your rent and utilities, please apply for assistance of up to 12 months of rent and utility bills dating back to March 13th, 2020. This includes security deposits and first or last month's rent. So far, through the Rent and Utility Relief Program, Your Way Home and our partners have been able to award over $25 million in grants to nearly 4,000 households consisting of almost 10,000 individuals. Visit www.montcorelief.org for more information about eligibility requirements, participating in community partners, and the application. Renters may also call 211 or text their zip code to 898-211 to apply. Applications will be accepted on a rolling basis and will be evaluated based on priorities to serve the most vulnerable rather than on a first-come, first-served basis. And finally, this Saturday, 9/11 marks the 20th anniversary of the devastating 9/11 attacks on the United States, where over 3,000 people lost their lives to a terrorist attack. We will join with other local officials to honor those who have lost their lives in the attacks and aftermath, and also those who have served on the front lines of the COVID pandemic by rededicating the Montgomery County 9/11 Memorial at its new location at the county's Emergency Operations Center in Eagleville. The memorial was commissioned by the county in 2003 and built by artist Susanna Norton. It was installed in the courthouse in 2005. On 9/11, please take a moment to acknowledge the victims and the sacrifices of first responders who were on the ground during and in the aftermath of the attack, including some of our own from Montgomery County. And as we remember how we came together as a nation to rebuild and heal from that tragedy, let us look to rekindle the sense of unity, our resolve for justice and peace, and our desire to defend all that is good in the world and work together to face the issues of today.
Good morning, everyone. I too would like to thank all our emergency response teams, Department of Public Safety, firefighters, police departments, public work departments, all across Montgomery County in this region that have worked tirelessly over the last week to help the residents in this area that were victims of damage due to Hurricane Ida. You hear often about Horsham and Upper Dublin, Bridgeport, Norristown, and, as mentioned just now, western Montgomery County as well was hit very hard yesterday. I was in Schwanxwill Borough in Marlborough Township, and I was amazed by the damage and the debris everywhere. You see mattresses and all type of household items out in the trash, cars that were damaged through flood. You can see the water line above the vehicle. So people were hit very hard, and I encourage everyone to use the resources available by the county to get back to a sense of normalcy. It was the timing couldn't have been worse with back-to-school routines for families and vacation schedules that were interrupted. So I, again, would like to thank everyone that stepped up to help resolve that issue. And also, this morning, I read an article. It was titled "Bucks County Requiring All County Workers to Be Vaccinated Against COVID-19 or Find New Work." In my opinion, this requirement is extreme overreach and abuse of power by county government, and I want our Montgomery County employees and residents to know that I am staunchly opposed to this requirement ever happening in Montgomery County. People deserve the power and freedom to choose whether or not they are vaccinated. I would like everyone to know that's my stance on that matter. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Francisco, we will move on to public comment on matters appearing on the agenda. Do we have individuals in the room who wish to make public comments? I think so. Is there anybody online?
Okay, again, if you're logged in through the Zoom, you can use the Raise Your Hand feature to indicate that you would like to make public comment. We do have one person.
Okay, Mr. Stein, will you go ahead and read them?
Certainly. Speakers should identify themselves by name and municipality. All public comments must be relevant or remain to county business. Under the law, this means that the subject matter of all comments must be limited to issues or items which are currently before the commissioners for consideration or which may come before the commissioners for consideration at a future meeting. Whether a matter is germane to county business is a determination to be made by the county's solicitor. Profane, slanderous, or discriminatory language or comments will not be tolerated in accordance with the county's nondiscrimination policy. A time limit of two minutes will be monitored, and county staff will respectfully request speakers to conclude their comments if the speaker goes beyond the time allotted. The board is not required to respond to public comments during the course of the meeting, so the public is reminded that this is not an opportunity for dialogue or questions and answers. The board chair may direct appropriate county staff to follow up on any questions or additional comments after the meeting. Disruptive behavior, including, but not limited to, attempting to disrupt the meeting in any way, arguing whether a matter is germane to county business once the solicitor's made determination of such, or refusing to yield the floor once time has elapsed, shall be grounds for muting or removal from the meeting without further admonishment or warning. And as always, commissioners welcome written correspondence, comments, and feedbacks at commissioners@montcopa.org.
All right, so first, we'll start with public comment on any matters on today's agenda.
Okay, we have one person, Bob Sheasley. You are now unmuted.
Hello? Can you hear me then?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you very much. I appreciate your very thorough presentation on the situation with storm damage. My wife and I own a small farm in Worcester Township. It's a very historic farm. It's back to the 1740s, and it's called Lily Field. We have had severe storm damage. Our pond has been silted in, our farm pond has been silted in, and what we're worried about is that the dam, the earthen dam itself, is going to breach in the next storm. Time is of the essence. We're very worried. We've had a lot of property damage besides the pond on our property. We're very worried that unless we take immediate remediation action, that the whole dam will go in the next storm. About half of the dam is already gone in the past storm. What, besides the information you've already provided to us, what is the most immediate step that we can take to secure funding and get remediation work started as soon as possible so that further damage isn't caused not only to our property but the properties downstream in our watershed? I just would like to know which door to knock on first to secure funding.
Well, I appreciate your question and your comments, sir. And if you can, Kelly, can you figure out how to get contact? Yeah, we'll get your contact information. I don't have the answer for you right this minute, but we will have the appropriate staff person follow up with you right after this meeting today.
Well, thank you very, very much. I appreciate the time and your help today.
You're welcome. And I hope, I'm so sorry for your losses, and I hope that we can find a way to assist.
Okay.
All right. Any general public comment, general public comment on items that are not on today's agenda?
Okay, we have one other person with their hand raised. It's Suzanne Lord Sheasley. You are now unmuted. Suzanne, you just. Okay, yes, we can hear you.
Yes, good morning. Good morning, everyone, and thank you so much for your diligence and attention to all these pressing matters. I am contacting you because I'm a landlord, a smallholding, and most of my tenants, we've been able to work together and, you know, get everybody right-side with whatever assistance they need. I do have one property, however, where I have not had cooperation. I need to know how to resource back rent for landlords. I have contacted Your Way Home, and that seems to be exclusively set up for renters or renters working in cooperation with landlords. So I have over a year's worth of income that is not accessible, I guess, in federal funds because the tenants have decided not to cooperate, even though they are qualified to get rental assistance. So it's up to me, and I don't know, like, I sort of what door to knock on to try to get cash back in place. They finally did abandon the property just very recently, and there's a huge amount of damage to the property. But right now, I need some back rent in order to get my mortgage and insurances paid and stuff on the property.
All right, well, thank you for that. Mr. Stein, can you?
Yes, we get our information.
Yeah, so if you would share your information as well, again, later today, we will have someone follow up with you.
Okay, I appreciate that so much, and keep up the good work.
Good luck to you. All right, any other public comments? Is that it? Before we move on to approval of the minutes, I just want to acknowledge Sheriff Kilkeny has joined us this morning. Good morning, Sheriff. All right, I will now move to approve the August 19th, 2021 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing done, move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing done, motion carries. All right, this month is Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month, and this morning, we have Anna Trapp from our Mental Health, who is our Mental Health Crisis Program Director with us to talk about some of the county's work and how folks can get involved this month.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone, and thank you, commissioners, for another year of having the honor to come up here and represent the work of the task force. Like Dr. Arkush said, September is Suicide Prevention Month, and this month in particular is Suicide Prevention and Awareness Week. It's always interesting to think about having a concentrated month where we sort of bring more attention and be more intentional about how we talk about it, because really, one of the things I'm most proud of is how this county, and when I say this county, I mean the community of the people who live here, the people who work here, and the county staff who are involved, pay attention to this and think about this all year long. Because suicide prevention is not something that waits for September. Pain and suffering is not something that waits for the fall or when we have our 5Ks or when we do our resource fairs. This is something people experience 10 months out of the year. So I'm really proud to be a part of a group of people. A lot of them volunteers, a lot of them doing it because it matters to them, and they care about the people in their lives and people they know or they don't know. So it's always an honor to get to stand up here and speak a little bit on their behalf. So one of the warnings I always like to give, if you come too close to myself or Erin Lewis or Claudine Chell, we will try to recruit you for the Suicide Prevention Task Force. If I have your email, I'm probably going to try and put you on it. In all seriousness, if you are ever interested, and this is a very low-pressure situation, right? If you end up on the task force email list, you're not required to come to every meeting. You're not required to become a trainer. It'd be great if you wanted to do those things. But really, what we're looking for is more human beings, more perspective, to just be a part of our circle and give your feedback, because suicide is a human issue, right? I've never done a talk, I've never done a training, and not been in the room with somebody who had lost someone to suicide, who lost someone who had made an attempt, or themselves had made an attempt. And maybe it's something that people in your life know about, or maybe you made an attempt and you woke up the next day and you never told anybody. But this is something that touches so many lives, and your feedback and your insights and your experiences are really important. So Erin's email is in that sort of blue starburst, and if you would ever have any interest in just joining our task force email list, popping into a couple of meetings, seeing maybe where you might fit in, you'd be more than welcome. And you would be in the company of local attempt survivors, lost survivors, family members who have lost somebody. We have teachers and school counselors, people from SACT teams, mental health professionals, people from the physical health world. Our law enforcement and first responder partners have been incredible resources in this prevention work. Neighbors, people who are sports coaches, all of it. And then we have community partners. Places of worship have such a big impact in this work, the way that they help frame, the way that they help people understand grief and suffering and resiliency. They've been wonderful. We've worked closely with libraries, different professional groups, business organizations. It's really an honor to be on a team with all the people who are listed up there. And if you don't see something that represents yourself, that means that we need you even more. So please feel free to email Erin and join us. So I think that data is really important to think about, and I can't talk about data without saying how grateful I am for our coroner's office here in this county. The folks who work in that office care so much about people, and the dignity that they bring to the investigations after a person's life has been lost is really, it's really something very phenomenal, and they've been great partners. So in 2020, we lost 106 people to suicide in Montgomery County. The big question that we get all the time, people are very curious to know, what impact has the COVID-19 pandemic had on suicide loss, right? And people are rightfully worried. It has been a really hard 18 months. We might not always agree on the reasons why it's been hard, but we know that it's been hard. The good news is that 106 is lower year than we lost in 2019, and we lost 107 people in 2018. So when we're talking just the data point of suicide death, in 2020, we did not see a spike in overall numbers. What I would caution is, we know that disaster events have a honeymoon period after they hit. There are protective factors. It sounds odd to say that, but if you think about the first few months of last year during the spring, that's the time when we tend to lose most of our adults, people were hunkering down together, people were looking out for one another. Are you okay? What's it like? What's your experience? Is there anything that you need? And all this attention on what's the impact on our mental health can be has been protective. As some of that goes away, as things stay hard. As some of that goes away, as things stay hard, but the honeymoon impact wears off, I would really encourage us, look out for our neighbors, look out for each other, look out for ourselves, because this thing is going to have a long tail. And I worry about 2022, 2023, 2024 going forward. Some things I think are helpful to know. Suicide has spread out across the county. For a long time, our Abington region did tend to have the highest numbers. In 2020, we saw Pottstown in the rest, in the western area sort of lead, lead the pack on that. But Norristown, Abington, kind of across the board, they still see losses. Our highest age group in 2020 were the 45 to 54-year-olds. For a while, we were really seeing baby boomers, so more of that 54 to 65 crowd were the highest. In 2020, it was a little bit younger. When it comes to youth suicides, folks are rightfully very worried about our young people, right? Historically, September, October, and January are the months when we see the most losses. In 2020, we also then, and over the last three years, so 2018, 2019, 2020, we've also seen a little bit of a pop happening in the late spring as well. So we should look out for each other, look out for our young people all the time. But anytime there's a big time of transition, change is hard. Even if change is a good thing, change is hard. So we want to be looking out for them then. And then, I really also want to drive home this point of means matters, means restriction. I, you know, if we had all day, we could go through all the research on how protecting a person who is in crisis from access to something that is lethal or deadly makes a huge impact on saving a life from suicide. We don't have all the time in the world. But if you go to the Harvard Means Matters website, you can see that there. But this is my plea, if there's someone in your home who's suffering, if there's you who's having a hard time, store ammunition separately, put a lock on a gun, put it in a case, give it to someone you trust to hold on to it. Get prescription medication out of your home, if at all possible. Just make it a little bit harder, because so much of suicide prevention is about buying time, buying time for that window of crisis to pass to get to the other side of it. If you can make it the next 15, 20, 30 minutes, maybe you can make it till tomorrow, maybe you can make it till the next day. Put some of the data into a chart, in case your brains work like that a little bit, and put, and then the yellow line on the bottom is about rates. So you can see that in 2020, there wasn't a big spike. It was kind of on par with what we would expect. I do want to be very, very clear. When I say "on par with what we would expect" or "it wasn't a super high number," it was a super big deal for every 106 of those families who lost somebody that they loved. So, this is not to diminish their experience. One death by suicide is a death too many, right? That's a person who suffered to the point that life wasn't worth living. That's a big deal. So I just want folks to know, we're not diminishing the impact on families. We're just saying there's something, I think, to be learned about why the numbers haven't gone up yet. And if we can grasp onto that and move forward with that, maybe we can keep preventing suicide deaths in this county. And then here's youth suicides. 21 and under is what we're considering youth. In 2020, we lost nine young people. That's nine young people, too many. It was one more than we lost in 2019. 2018 was a good year, 2017 was a terrible year. So in the context of data, it once again kind of fell right in where you would expect it to. One thing that did look different, and I know I already said this, but I have to say it again. In 2019, we had one young person who died by firearm. In 2020, there were six. So again, if you have a young person in your home, if you think they don't know where the firearm is, they do, right? A lock, store ammunition separately. We partnered recently with an incredible group called Hold My Guns, and they're really focused on preventing suicide death among veterans. And they partner with different gun shops and gun ranges to provide safe storage for people, whether it's because you're traveling or someone's having a hard time in the home. They helped host a suicide prevention training at the Lower Providence Rod and Gun Club. It was an incredible conversation with the 2A Community Bound Safety and how we look out for each other and what do you do. So that was a very cool opportunity. Just a couple things, what do I look out for? There's someone that I love, I want to make sure I don't miss anything. I could do a training for you on clues and warning signs every day for the rest of your life, and nothing will ever be as good as your own human intuition. That thing is amazing. So above anything on this slide, trust your gut. If something feels like it's not okay, it's probably not, ask about it. But remember, there are things people say, things people do, and then situations people find themselves in that may put us at risk. Verbal clues, "I want to die." "Pretty soon, you won't have to worry about me." "I wish I could go to sleep and not wake up." The things that people do, it's what's different for that person. It could be anything from sleeping too much to too little, hyperactivity to not coming out of their room for days at a time. Especially with young people, the behavioral clues, you want to look for things that are happening physically, because they don't have the same language that we do, right? So, they carry their stress, they carry the things that are hard on their bodies. I can't tell you how many parents I've talked to who've taken their young person to every GI specialist in 50 miles, trying to find out what the stomach aches are about. And that's a good thing to do, you want to rule out the physical health issues, but then the pieces click, it's anxiety, it's stress, it's sadness, it's feeling overwhelmed every day. And then situational clues. I could give you a list to memorize again, things like being expelled or losing a job or fear of incarceration or having a loved one die. But really, if something makes you feel alone and disconnected, if something makes you feel like you have a loss of control or you're a burden to others or ashamed of yourself, that's a risk factor, that's something that we want to look out for. I have at the bottom of this page our mobile crisis team number. I feel very fortunate, in Montgomery County, we have a mobile crisis team available 24/7. They dispatch out of Plymouth Meeting, they can go anywhere in the county, unmarked vehicle, khakis and a polo. Nobody has to even know that's who's at your home. They'll come have a cup of coffee, talk to you about what's going on. It's 1-855-634-4673, and we have tear-offs back there on that table. Seriously, you can call them, there's no wrong reason to call. The crisis could be happening, everything's on fire, you can call them. Or it could be, my hair's on the back of my neck are standing up, and I just don't know what to say. Let them coach you through it, that's what they're there for. I talked a little bit about some of our initiatives. We're really trying to get into the data and make sure that we understand it, and it's guiding us. We're doing a lot of community trainings and outreach. It's been an interesting year, we're doing virtual trainings in a way we haven't before. We just did one with parents last night. What a cool group that was to come together. And they had such great questions and insights, and what does it mean to try to keep our kids safe? It was, it was excellent, I was very proud to be a part of it. We have the Peyton Hart Project, we have, we're going to try a 5K this coming up year, wish us luck. Claudine volunteered to organize that one, so if anyone is interested, I will send you her way. But if you ever have ideas about, hey, maybe have you tried this? I think it could have an impact, please let us know. And specifically for 2021, we're really focusing on survivor voices, the people who have survived attempts and the people who have lost loved ones. Those are the ones who have been there, they have the best insight in what works and what we do. We're looking at social determinants of health, talking about the rent and the utility, that's suicide prevention, right? People who have somewhere to live, people who have enough to eat, people who feel like their neighbors and communities have their back, that's suicide prevention. We have a death review team that we're going to be starting. Very excited about that, because talk about getting into the data, what happened in this person's life the weeks or months before it was over. We can learn so much from that and then do right by the next person who's hurting. And these are some more resources. In the bottom right-hand corner, that's that mobile crisis team specific to Montgomery County. Everything else is national. So if you know somebody who's not in Montgomery County and having a hard time, feel free to send them any of those other resources.
Great, well, thank you so much for this incredible work that you and your team are doing. And I just hope that people realize that there's no stigma here. There's no judging, there's none of that, that if people are not feeling well for whatever reason, I hope they will reach out and make sure that they get help. And it's, it's great to see that the whole community is coming together around this work. And I think in some ways, some people have told me that the ability to do some of these things virtually have actually made it easier for some people to participate who are maybe a little uncomfortable about coming to something in person. So, keep up the great work. And just curious if there's anything in particular that you've learned during the pandemic that you think is something new or different that you want to continue going forward?
I think that it's, I think the ideas that people have about how to support one another, especially folks who don't consider themselves mental health experts or experts, but they're, hey, what if we did a lunch and learn? Or, hey, what if we walked a trail together? Those sort of ideas are the ones that then have the biggest ripple impact. So I think the biggest thing I've learned during the pandemic is that as a human being, if you think it, say it out loud. Like, maybe, maybe we can do it, and maybe we can, we can change things together in that way, and that's been really cool, because there's been this sort of forced creativity, because the world has looked different. And out of it, you know, people who don't consider them leaders have been great leaders, so that's been neat to see.
And I think the other question I get a lot are, sometimes it's parents and sometimes it's just a friend who says, "I'm worried about this person." If I ask them if they're thinking about committing suicide, will that give them the idea? I think there's a lot of reluctance for people to ask. Do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, that's such a great, great question, because it's a fear that comes from a good spot. You don't want to make things worse. But what we know is that suicide's not suggestible in that way. If somebody is thinking about suicide, if somebody is suicidal and you ask them about it, you're not going to move them further up the risk spectrum, you're not going to make things worse, right? Same thing, if I'm not thinking about suicide, that's not an option to me. It's not something that I've considered for myself. If you ask me about it, it doesn't suddenly sound good to me. Oh, yeah, that's not, that's not how it works. What we know is that when we ask, now respectfully, right? There are ways to ask about suicide that convey judgment or can make somebody feel afraid that you're disappointed in them. And we want to avoid that as much as possible. But if we ask, if we say, hey, I love you and I'm worried about you, and I'm wondering if you're thinking about suicide, I'm wondering if you're thinking about killing yourself. If they are, then you've given them the opportunity, maybe for the first time in their life, to talk about something that feels really dark and lonely. And if they aren't, well, they're not now considering suicide for themselves, but they know you're a safe person to go to when they are.
Thanks for the fantastic report and the incredible work your team does all year round, not just this month, not just this week, but all year round. I have a question, I go on through the QPR training. Do you have any, I know I want to put you on the spot, how many Montgomery County residents have, have taken that training from the task force? Because I know you kept it going during the pandemic as well all over the county.
So, as a task force, we did, we chose the QPR as our training initiative about five years ago. And it took a little while to get some steam, but we average, we've, prior to the pandemic, we were averaging, you know, around 1,000 trainees a year. Over the pandemic, there have been, the numbers have been less, but not that much less, because we've hosted quite a number of virtual trainings. And we can do hybrid trainings now, too. So, I would love to use that question as an opportunity, too, to plug for people, if you would like to bring this training in for your group. It could be anywhere from an hour and a half to three or four hours, depending on what you need, we can go fast, we can make it longer. If you're comfortable having us come in person, we have training, trainers who will come in person. If you're more comfortable doing it virtual, we'll do it virtual.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for this very detailed presentation. You've been through a lot of hard work, and I'd like to thank you and the entire prevention team for stepping up and helping the vulnerable in our community. And please express my gratitude to all those members. And just last week, I had a conversation with a police officer that handles juvenile matters, and they were telling me that obviously, nine too many as far as youth suicides. That number may seem low, but the challenging mental health overall that our younger generations are facing, in their opinion, seems to be higher, and it's harder to detect. But not as much in-person learning and social distancing and mask wearing, it's hard to tell if people are interacting socially in a different way. And also, not being in front of youth coaches or teachers as much as they used to be, and sometimes the 9/11 response calls, it escalates to that level. And where before, a guidance counselor would intervene and improve things, before it escalates, now they have to de-escalate. And obviously, domestic abuse cases happening in households escalating as well. So I know this is, takes an all-hands-on-deck approach to combat this, and your leadership is really appreciated by all those and certainly the victims that have to deal with this matter. So thank you for everything you're doing, and keep up the great work.
Chuck, thank you so much. All right, Mr. France. Authorization to execute the necessary documents for receipt of a National Endowment of the Arts, Our Town Grant. Not Mr. France. Mr. Hartman.
All right, just one sec, I just have to do one thing here. All right, you just had this one slide?
Yes, just one.
Okay.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
On August 17th, just this past August, the Planning Commission submitted an application for the National Endowment of the Arts, Our Town Grant Program. Our Town is a creative placemaking grant program supporting projects that integrate arts, culture, and design activities to strengthen communities by advancing local economic, physical, and social outcomes. With Norristown-based Cicote as our 501(c)(3) nonprofit partner, this NEA grant will help fund a creative placemaking project envisioned in the county's recently adopted Trail Access Diversity and Awareness Plan. Specifically, we would develop designs for two gateway sculptural artistic elements at either end of the new green space developed along Lafayette Street in Norristown, surrounding the Skookil River Trail. We will also work with the community to develop an artistic and sculptural seating element that would serve as a community focal point and place of respite. So, looking at the slide up on the screen right now, Lafayette Street is running horizontally above all the area of color there, the browns and the greens. On the left-hand side of the slide, along that spine of Lafayette Street, you see the Transportation Center on the far left, and then you see the Trail Junction Center in that green polygon that's, the building itself is in yellow. And so this green space extends essentially from the Trail Junction Center all the way to the east to approximately Ford Street in Norristown. This map just shows that green area to where it gets up to Walnut and Franklin Street in Norristown. But you can see that unlike most portions of the Skookil River Trail, this has a lot of green area around it, right in the center of Norristown. So the area that we're talking about integrating these sculptural gateway elements would be really at the right-hand side of this drawing and on the left-hand side where the Trail Junction Center is, and more specifically where the Chester Valley Trail will join the Skookil River Trail when the Chester Valley Trail is completed next year. So essentially, these elements will provide gateways into this green space and provide artistic elements to draw the community to the trail and to this green space and to create a sense of community and art within this area. We've requested $50,000 in grant funding from NEA with a $50,000 match from the county. That $50,000 match from the county is comprised of $20,000 of in-kind services and a $30,000 cash contribution. The grant funds themselves would pay for community engagement, planning, design, materials, as well as construction. Award notice will take place in April of 2022. The grant period may commence as early as July 1st of 2022 and can last for up to two years. And so therefore, the Planning Commission is requesting the Board of Commissioners authorize the execution of the necessary documents to receive Our Town grant funds, to receive Our Town grant funds, if awarded, of $50,000 from the National Endowment for the Arts, as well as provide a county grant match in the amount of $50,000.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to execute the necessary documents to receive Our Town grant funds, if awarded, of $50,000 from the National Endowment for the Arts and to provide a grant match of $50,000, of which $20,000 will be in-kind services. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Well, Mr. Hartman, I think this is a really great project. I sure hope that we are successful. And I think it would be a wonderful opportunity for the community to really put something together that is meaningful here locally in the community. So hopefully it will all work out.
Yeah, we'll keep our fingers crossed. We keep trying. Good luck, Mel. Great, thanks very much. Thanks.
Okay, hearing no additional comment, we will move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
All right, next, Mr. Bonner. Authorization to enter into a reimbursement agreement with North Wales Water Authority for the replacement of Bridge Number 162.
With apologies if this is not more exciting, so there's no presentation. Before you this morning, for consideration is a resolution authorizing the county to enter into an agreement with the North Wales Water Authority for reimbursement of costs related to adjustment of water authority utilities in the vicinity of Bridge 162 in Montgomery Township. Through this agreement, North Wales Water Authority will reimburse the county $162,500, rounding up by 40 cents, for county-managed contractor work to install a 16-inch water pipe main at the bridge. Obviously, as you've seen before, this is an example where we are doing bridge rehabilitation and reconstruction. There are utilities in the vicinity. And we are relocating them on the way during our county-managed contractor-run project. And that is what's on the table today.
All right, thank you. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to enter into a reimbursement agreement with North Wales Water Authority that will provide reimbursement to the county in the amount of $162,499.60 for construction of utility facilities associated with the replacement of Stump Road Bridge. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thanks, Mr. Bonner.
Thank you.
Mr. Stein, approval of county-authorized signatories.
Yes, thank you. This resolution authorizes the individuals listed in it to sign county documents. This is something that we need occasionally, usually when we need to prove to the state that people are authorized to enter into grants or other agreements. This will have the names and specimen signatures of the board chair, the COO, deputy COO, CFO, myself, and, oh, that's it? That's the entire list? And so that will make sure that the state knows that you're authorized to sign those documents.
Thank you. I will move that, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, that individuals holding the below-listed titles, offices, or positions within the county of Montgomery are designated as authorized representatives of the county of Montgomery and are to be considered the proper county officials for the purposes of executing all manner of documents and performing all actions in connection with those items, which have been duly authorized by the county commissioners via resolution, ordinance, or other legally permissible means. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Mr. Stein, our Hurricane Ida disaster declaration.
Thank you. This resolution will formalize the disaster declaration already authorized by the commissioners in the wake of Hurricane Ida. This resolution is required under the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Services Code when the commissioners recognize a disaster which will affect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents and property in Montgomery County. And allows us to essentially cut through the red tape, get contracts in place for debris management and other services in place to help residents.
Thank you. I will move that we, the undersigned commissioners of Montgomery County, pursuant to the provisions of Section 7501 of the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Services Code as amended, do hereby declare the existence of a disaster emergency in Montgomery County via further resolve that we direct the Montgomery County Department of Public Safety to coordinate the activities of the emergency response to take all appropriate action needed to alleviate the effects of this disaster, to aid in the restoration of essential public services, and to take any other emergency response action deemed necessary to respond to this disaster emergency. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. I just want to remind the public that we actually signed this disaster declaration on Thursday morning, I believe, right after the storm happened Wednesday night. We did not in any way delay in declaring a disaster emergency here in the county. This motion today is simply to formalize the signing of that document. Any other comments? Okay, all right. Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Ms. Perdue, our personnel report.
Good morning, commissioners. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioner's department's personnel list. It is a three-page document dated Wednesday, September 8th, 2021, with a timestamp of 9:28 a.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Perdue. I will move to approve the September 9th, 2021 personnel presentation as given by Director of Human Resources, Ms. Donna Perdue, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. All right, Ms. O'Malley, advertisements of a bid and RFPs. Good morning.
Good morning. There is a bid on behalf of assets and infrastructure for a roof replacement. A successful responder will provide a complete roof replacement of the stone pavilion located within Lower Park. Contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Two, an RFP on behalf of finance for financial advising services. The successful responder will provide financial advisory services. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. Three, an RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for a stop-school violence program. The successful responder will design and implement an educational program for students, teachers, and school districts to prevent violence and bullying. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. Four, an RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for learning curriculums. The successful responder will provide an evidence-based social-emotional learning curriculum and evaluation instrument for students in kindergarten through eighth grade. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. All bids and RFPs are available on the county's purchasing website at www.montgomerypa.org/purchasing.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding request for the advertisement of a bid and RFPs as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, award of contract.
Number one, a contract award commerce video program of Rival Productions LLC, Blue Bell PA, $29,000. Contract provides video production services designed to highlight the key aspects of county initiatives Homes For All and Your Way Home. RFP 2129 was viewed by 43 providers with nine responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated responder. Two, a contract award commissioners' consultants, Jeff Calabiano of Syracuse, New York, $64,000. Contract provides for a consultant to coordinate and manage the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Contract's for the period of 9/1/2021 through 12/31/2021. Three, contract award Health and Human Services Program Development, Justice Works Youth Care Incorporated of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, $150,000. Contract provides a lead agency to coordinate plan of safe care, activities, and engagement. RFP 2130 was viewed by 31 providers with three responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated provider. Contract is for a two-year period. Four, contract award Health and Human Services Program Development, RSVP of King of Prussia PA, $279,228. Contract provides a consultant for the coordination and implementation of the appraised program in Montgomery County. RFP 2131 was viewed by 35 providers with one response received. Contract is awarded to the only responding provider that has met all qualifications of the RFP. Contract is for a period of three years, beginning 1/1/2022, with two optional annual renewal terms. Five, contract award information and technology solutions equipment, AC Connection Sales Corporation of Merrimack, New Hampshire, Contract provides the continued replacement of uninterrupted power supply units for parks, trails, and historic sites and district courts. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Six, contract award information and technology solutions document service, Scan Tech Incorporated of Willow Grove PA, $96,752.50. Contract provides for the scanning, microfilming, and secure destruction of 500 boxes of domestic relations office files. Services are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Seven, contract award information and technology solutions consulting services, Microsoft Technical Support of Dallas, Texas, $302,680. Contract provides support for the additional vaccine booster for the Microsoft Vaccine Management Program. Includes a new updated resident portal that allows booster shot registration and scheduling and updated frontline worker app that will allow for resident check-in and record booster flu vaccinations. Additional integration with state system to record the vaccine administered. Contract is for service through 6/23/2022. Eight, contract award information and technology solutions software, Dropbox Incorporated of San Francisco, California, $41,310. Contract provides for Dropbox Enterprise user licenses. Contract is for a two-year term. Software is proprietary. Nine, contract award information and technology solutions software, SHI International Corporation of Somerset, New Jersey, $86,714.29. Contract provides Adobe Sign software. Adobe Sign is a cloud-based e-signature service that allows the user to manage signature processes. Contract is for a one-year term. Software is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Ten, contract award information and technology solutions software, SHI International Corporation of Somerset, New Jersey, $120,084.39. Contract provides Zendesk Professional Call Center software subscription and support services. Services are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Contract is for a one-year period. Eleven, contract award public safety equipment, CDW Government of Chicago, Illinois, $119,357.36. Contract provides computer equipment to upgrade the workstations at the Public Safety Training Campus. Equipment is available through a Sourcewell Cooperative contract. Twelve, contract award public safety equipment, Dell Incorporated of Brown Rock, Texas, $45,005.59. Contract provides computer monitor upgrades at the Public Safety Training Campus. Monitors are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Thirteen, contract award sheriff and security uniforms. McDonald Uniform Company Incorporated in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, $106,270.70. Contract provides uniforms for the sheriff and security departments. Specification 6454 was viewed by 29 providers with three responses received. Contract is awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Contract is for a period of one year with two optional annual renewal terms. Fourteen, contract award youth center food service. Beesers Incorporated of Parisburg, PA, $42,000. Contract provides the purchase of food products due to supply chain constraints from the current contracted provider. Food products are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Fifteen, contract renewal of public safety wireless services, Verizon Wireless of Lehigh PA, $57,278.40. Services provide connectivity for mobile data computers to the 911 system. Contract is valid for a period of one year. Services are available through a National Association of State Procurement Officials at ValuePoint Cooperative contract. Sixteen, contract renewal youth center food service, U.S. Food Service Valantown PA, $197,563. Contract provides the purchase of food products for the Youth Center Food Services Division. Contract is available through a tri-state food services group cooperative. Contract terms for a two-year period through 6/30/2022. Seventeen, contract amendment public safety. ESI Equipment Incorporated of Montgomeryville PA, $808.50. Original contract provided updating services to two Ford F35 contracts for mobile clinic use. Amendment provides for the installation of communication equipment. Revised contract value is $169,979.72. There are eighteen contract renewals and seven amendments for Health and Human Services. Providers and services are listed at the end of the agenda and the back of the room.
All right, thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract numbers one through 18 as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. And Ms. O'Malley, I know we have one additional Health and Human Services renewal.
Yes, there is a contract renewal for Health and Human Services for the Office of Drug and Alcohol Progressions Companies Incorporated, fee-for-service. Contract provides non-hospital rehab detox services and co-occurring disorder treatment for adult males and females. Services paid on a fee-for-service basis. $329 for clinically managed high-intensity residential treatment. $303 per day for monitored inpatient withdrawal management. $348 per day for co-occurring disorder treatment.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding award of contract number 19, Progressive Companies Incorporated, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment?
I have a comment. I'm going to refuse myself from this vote to the fact that I have a relative in my immediate family that has a business relationship with this service provider. So even though there's no direct conflict with myself, I'll choose to abstain to avoid that appearance.
Thank you, Mr. Gale. Any additional comment?
No.
Okay, then we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion carries. And just please note, Ms. Washington and Commissioner Arkush and Lawrence were the only ones there. Thank you. All right, Ms. O'Malley, awards of contract for assets and infrastructure.
Yes, number one is a contract award for equipment, Plago Company LLC of James Creek PA, $26,876. Contract provides the replacement of storm-damaged playground equipment at Lower Park Newman Park. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Two, contract amendment engineering, Stahl Schaefer Engineering LLC of State College PA, $10,288.95. Original contract provided engineering, environmental permitting, and services during construction for the replacement of county bridge number 172, swamp hike over Minister Creek in New Hanover Township as per RFP 1840. Amendment provides a requested survey by the Pennsylvania Historic Museum Commission to obtain a Department of Environmental Protections permit. Three, contract award equipment, Excel Communications Worldwide Incorporated of Harleysville PA, $115,677.80. Contract provides audiovisual equipment and installation for the new Coroner's Facility. Equipment and installation services are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Four, contract award One Montgomery Plaza Electrical Infrastructure Upgrade Multiple Contractors, $3,563,010. Specification 6447 was downloaded by 68 firms with seven submissions received. Contract provides general construction services for the construction of a new electrical infrastructure system in One Montgomery Plaza, including new switch equipment and a new backup generator. The following firms submitted the lowest responsive and responsible bids. TN Ward Company of Ardmore PA, General Construction Services, $784,810. Guy M. Cooper Incorporated of Willow Grove PA, Plumbing Construction Services, $65,700. Guy M. Cooper Incorporated of Willow Grove PA, Mechanical Construction Services, $135,000. Guy M. Cooper Incorporated of Willow Grove PA, Fire Protection Construction Services, $257,500. Hobbs &amp; Company Incorporated of Willow Grove PA, Electrical Construction Services, $2,310,000. Five, contract amendment Design Services, NOR Design Incorporated of Philadelphia PA, $559,129. Contract provides architectural and engineering services for the One Montgomery Plaza Reskin Project. Amendment provides additional design and engineering services for additional construction administration, design and engineering for OMP mechanical and electrical infrastructure, swing space design, and interior design for the One Montgomery Plaza lobby. Six, contract amendments contracted services various contractors, $56,467. Contracts provide services related to the One Montgomery Plaza Reskin Project. Amendments provide change orders as described. Plumbing and fire protection construction, Stan Rock Plumbing of Zion Grove PA, $18,564. Amendment provides extended trench drain construction, added pipe insulation, sprinkler construction work, and plumbing revisions in individual spaces. Electrical contracting, Hobbs &amp; Company of Boothwin PA, $37,903. Amendment provides data wiring revisions, additional power circuits, and exterior lighting changes. Seven, contract amendment Justice Center Phase II Construction. Ernest Bach &amp; Sons, Dalco Joint Venture of Philadelphia PA, $481,824. Original contract provided general construction services for Phase II of the Montgomery County Justice Center project. Amendment corrects prior resolution amount to reflect full bid award, no changes to contract services. There is no increase in value to the original submitted bid and no impact to overall project budget. Contract awarded to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder.
All right, thank you, Ms. O'Malley. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment?
I have a comment. I'd like to request that the motion on the floor is amended to separate contract amendment number five, contract amendment number six, and contract amendment number seven. Due to the fact that I oppose the original contracts, I choose not to vote in favor of the amendments to these contracts.
Okay, we'll accept that amendment. So we will first vote on items one through four. Is there any additional board comment on items one through four? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. I will now move to approve items five, six, and seven as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any additional board comment? All right, hearing none, Ms. Washington.
Chair Arkush.
Aye.
Vice Chair Lawrence.
Aye.
Commissioner Gale.
Opposed.[1734.21]
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. O'Malley. Any closing commissioner comments? Okay. Then I will announce that our next meeting of the Board of Commissioners will be on September the 23, 2021, and I will move to adjourn the September 9, 2021 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Any negative votes? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned. Invite the Controller to the desk for our salary board. Good morning, Controller Sanchez. All right. Good morning, or welcome back, Ms. Perdue. And we will begin with public comment for salary board. Is there any public comment for salary board? No, no, no problem. Okay. All right, again, Ms. Perdue.
Thank you. Good morning, members of salary board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the salary board list. It is a four-page document dated Wednesday, September 8, 2021, with a timestamp of 9:28 a.m. Of note, we have two retirees, Edward Blevins from the Health Department after 26 years, and William Galuzzo from the Sheriff's Department after 38 years. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for salary board consideration.
Thank you. We'll move, or I'm sorry, is there a motion to approve the September 9, 2021 salary board presentation as given by Director of Human Resources, Ms. Donna Perdue, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same? Move by Controller Sanchez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. And I see the sheriff is here. He speak.
Good morning, you're welcome.
Commissioners, thank you very much. Controller Sanchez, thank you very much. Today is a very sad day for the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office. We're seeing one of our own, Bill Retires, you just did officially here. And anybody, you know, I started off as sheriff six years ago, and we all know as row officers, we're often temporary. We're not here very long compared to a lot of the employees that really run our offices day to day. And I stand on the shoulder of a giant right here, Bill. Maybe not in physical stature, but definitely in personality. If anybody gets to know Bill, he is just a great guy. He always has a smile on his face. He's always cracking a joke. Yeah, exactly. He's one of those people in an organization that you know just makes the organization better and helps make the organization a family. So my first Bill story is, Fourth of July, we know it's all a big day for politicians. We run around from parade to parade. And I was a new sheriff at the time, and Bill was trying to figure me out. And he's like, who's this guy? Bill, as you may have guessed from the name, a proud Italian-American, was friends with the previous sheriff, and who's this young Irish guy, or whatever gets elected sheriff all of a sudden. So Bill had the great task of driving me from the Norristown Parade to the Skipback Parade, and we're very close on a time crunch. And we put the lights on, got me there on time. We didn't kill anybody, so it was all a big success. But we really got to know each other and talk about our family, talk about our shared values, and kind of figured each other out as human beings. And it was really a good day, and we became friends ever since. More than that, I do question his culinary judgment. He talked about his love of Lou's Zep Shop. I'm personally an Eve's person, just to say. But he doesn't even like the zeps there. He likes the pork roll sandwich. And that's what he would tell me about how he loved getting pork roll sandwiches there. So that's just a little bit about Bill personally and what kind of person he is within the sheriff's office, and a little bit about his career. So he's been with the sheriff's office 38 years. The sheriff was in fourth grade at the time when Bill started his career in the sheriff's office, and thank God. He served about in every division, including courts, civil, and transportation. He also worked with the bomb squad and the motorcycle unit. When we look through his personnel file, there are two dozen letters of appreciation and commendation from township officials and police chiefs and saying what a great job he did with our various community fairs and helping in mutual aid situations. And he has the ability, through his smarts and his sense of humor and emotional intelligence, to diffuse situations. Specifically, in 1994, there was, in the courthouse, a knife-wielding subject, and Deputy Galuzzo is the person that diffused that situation so nobody got hurt. So more than that, I really want to thank Bill for everything he's done for the sheriff's office. I am happy to call him a friend, and I will be happy to take him over to Lou's. He can get the pork roll. I'll just stick with the regular zep. So congratulations, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sure, no problem whatsoever. And I'll give you the sheriff's challenge coin. There you go, for all you did. Bill, did you want to say anything?
It's a bad thing to give me a mic. That's all I can say.
Now you got to go buy some drinks.
Well, he's no longer a county employee.
First thing I want to know is, am I getting overtime for this? When I started here, the sheriff's department was actually like, not even recognized in most of the county. They had part-time police doing this. And then, when I got sworn in, you got a gun, a badge, and a blessing. Pretty much, that was it. In-house training, cuffing, escorting prisoners, that was about it. And so over the years, this has really become an excellent, excellent place to work and to show your appreciation for this county. And I just want to say that I really wasn't sure I wanted to go, but health issues got in the way. So it's better than that. I don't want to be found out over there on the courthouse steps. So I figured it's time. But I want to say thank you. I want to especially say thank you to Sheriff Gokanyi. Thank you, Sheriff. I definitely appreciate this. And also to Adam, our chief deputy, who's been my friend for as long as he's been here, which is not as long as I've been. And again, I want to say thank you very much for this honor. Thank you.
Well, Deputy Galuzzo, thank you for your many, many years of dedicated service to this county and to everyone who lives here. We are so grateful for that, and we wish you nothing but the best in your retirement. And you definitely need to come back and visit.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Sounds like you will.
For sure. He owes me a sandwich.
All right, thank you all. All right. With that, we will entertain a motion to adjourn the September 9, 2021 meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board. Move by Controller Sanchez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.